Well, we're a little past due, so I'll call Ridge County Commission meeting to order, October first, two thousand twenty-five. First up is the pledge of allegiance. And Lacey, would you lead us in that today?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
When you make a motion on the agenda, there's some change, a couple of changes on that.
Okay.
What's the changes?
No Mitch.
Mitch isn't here and then Mr. Fernandez wants to move the grant a little bit differently from what the agenda says.
Where's he?
Kai is.
Oh, okay.
And it's written down on what Sim has in front of him.
Got it. Okay. Um, with those changes then, with Mitch being gone, the ten forty and eleven A M. item and then the, just the grant name change, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, moving second, the agenda be set for today, y'all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Brandon, come on up. Why don't you tell us what you, what and why and?
Uh, I'm here to make some changes to our encroachment permit processes. One is to maybe get the building inspector to put that part of his deal that they have to require him to contact us if it's off a county right away for an encroachment permit. And then also some of our costs on the permit pricing. Like the paved road cr- crossings, I'd like to change that to twenty-five hundred and our gravel road cr- crossings to five hundred.
Those are crossings?
Crossings.
Uh, what, so can we talk about the first thing? Cause you're talking about two things. So the encroachment for driveways.
Right.
Um, and then, and then maybe after we can talk, talk about the crossing. So the encroachment for driveways, you want to include it more clearly in the building permit process.
Yeah, cause right now it's all together with this. We have the crossings and the encroachment together.
Okay. Is there a fee right now for the encroachment?
Yeah, it's only a hundred dollars.
Okay.
How much is that?
A hundred and then a fifty dollar inspection fee.
Do you think we ought to just include that, that do no fee and have that, because I feel like the building inspector, if he's doing it, that that would be already covered and we're just double charging.
Well. He wouldn't really be, he wouldn't be giving the permit out. He'd just make that part of his list of things for them to do.
So you, you're issuing the permit, but you want Tyler to do the inspection?
Let them know.
No, just let them know that they need to contact us for the permit.
Okay, not, not issue a building permit until they have an encroachment permit from the, okay, that's making, I'm just trying to clarify the process.
I think that's easy to do. I think that's easy to put on the, the building, on our building website, website.
Yeah.
You know, cause in his list of things, that's not in there.
No.
And so we can, we can add that pretty easy.
So on the encroachment permit, we're charging what?
A hundred dollars for approach off of a county highway.
And that's gonna require you probably visit that approach probably at least one time, maybe two times?
Yeah, that's, that's what we charge and then we refund that. There's a fifty dollar inspection fee that we keep. So the total would be a hundred and fifty that they pay us. If I approve it, then we give them a hundred dollars back.
Yeah, it needs to be more than that.
So that's what I'm, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
See, here's the fifty dollar inspection fee and then the deposit is a hundred dollars. But I think that maybe change the inspection fee to a hundred bucks, cause.
I guess not every new build needs an encroachment. Some of them are already building, yeah.
That's right. That's why we're not double charging. And, and you know, once they have an encroachment, then that creates an issue for us in snow removal and as well as, you know.
I'm seeing it.
Tight. Um, if we're gonna do a full fee change, which we need to do, we need to have a public hearing on a, on the fees. So, um, let's, uh, let's determine what those are and then, and then put a, uh, schedule a public hearing for November for a fee change. So if we went on encroachment, if we went to fifty, are we gonna, and then not even do a refund on that?
Yeah, I wouldn't even do a refund. I would just do a fee.
I mean, it's gonna require.
Yeah.
I mean, once, once it's there, you know, there's, there's gonna be additional time and, and you know, trips to make sure it's done and those type of things. So, and then, you know, it depends on where it's at and we may have to add additional, uh, you know, gravel over a period of time. If it's, you know, if it's coming, particularly if it's coming up on an asphalt road, you know, it spins the gravel out and so there's gonna be this, you know, maintenance. It's just an added maintenance to us, so.
I think we're on board with you, Brandon, that this needs to be addressed. Uh, we've, since it's a fee change, like Bill said, we're gonna need a public hearing and we probably need to noodle over what that would be. Uh, you know, before we set that, so.
Okay.
I think the goal would be to get it on the next month's meeting. Um, but as far as cutting the road, c- cutting a crossroad, so right now we don't allow cuts, but people are still doing it?
Yes, not on pavement, we don't allow it, but people are still doing it.
Without permits?
Without permits, without anything. There's, there's three of them on the Sweetwater Gulf Coast Road. That's just happened within the last year.
Okay, so now those are two separate problems for cutting. We, we have enforcement of people that don't get permit for cutting. And then we need to differentiate, can, can we not, are we allowed to not allow, allow cutting? I guess that's the thing. Can we tell people they can't cut and they have to bore?
Yeah.
That's, and if we're gonna do that, then we, uh, boring is less expensive, so I would be more in favor of a lesser fee for boring. If we're not gonna allow cutting.
Right.
So those are my initial thoughts. I, I feel, and you have to, you've done this more than me, so you have to tell me, boring a road, is there any maintenance required by you guys or do you usually forget about it?
No, we usually don't have to worry too much, you know. It'll settle a little bit on the shoulders where they dig for their bore, but.
So do you think it'd be appropriate for us to have a lesser amount if we just have boring?
Yeah, I do.
And then have a good enforcement process for people that cut illegally?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Oh, I agree.
And then.
I can't believe you would.
Yeah.
They would cut it without permission, cause.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know who's, I mean, they're running water lines, sewer line, whatever it is. I talked to the Sweetwater guys and they're not doing it. It's the contractors. Just running the service to the house.
Now, do we want to allow cutting across dirt roads? Because I've done that and I feel like dirt roads are a little bit.
Yeah, I feel like that's okay.
Probably still need some sort of deposit because it, the, they do sink.
Right. Yeah, and that's needs to be raised up too.
Okay.
So I mean, you always have to, it takes a year for them to heal, year and a half, no matter what.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't do anything about it. So when you differentiate between dirt and asphalt, asphalt don't allow any cutting, just boring with some sort of deposit that's lesser than it would have been because boring.
Right.
And then some sort of, um, way of enforcing no cutting. And then on dirt, allow cutting or boring with some sort of deposit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense to me. Sounds like you probably need two different permits, you know.
Oh, that's, that's, cause this one's kinda, you can see how they got it listed there on the old ones. I'd like to have two different permits, one just for encroachments and then one for boring done.
Yeah, encroachment is such a complex, you know, like kind of a confusing word. Like we just need like an approach permit.
Yeah.
You know, in my mind, an approach encroachment permit and then a crossing encroachment permit.
Something. And you could even on those, you know, add in a right of way digging too, cause some of the utilities do that, you know, like down on the east side last year for the, for the campground.
Yeah.
We just had to write it up as a digging in the right of way permit. But if there was something official on there, they'd make it easier.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Uh, as somebody who's worked in the right of way, it is kind of the wild west in Ridge County right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I'm in favor of getting things a little more organized.
And then I've talked with Anna Lacey too, and there's a lot of people don't wanna write checks, you know, they wanna come and pay over, go in with a credit card, so maybe we could even get these online. I could go out and inspect the location, they can fill out the paperwork online, pay for it.
Yeah.
Be nice.
So what do you think like a fair, if we're just not setting anything in stone, but what do you think a fair fee would be for like a boring application?
For boring, I think, you know, maybe three hundred and fifty bucks.
Enough, just enough for you guys to go out over the, a few times over a year and make sure nothing's collapsed or?
Yeah, well, we always have to put a little gravel, no matter what. Couple, three yards every time, you know. But, cause they do settle. It's just not a big issue, cause no one's driving there, but unless they run off the road.
Okay.
What about a full cut on gravel?
That probably the most expensive one?
Yeah, I'd say five hundred on that one.
As somebody who's cut across a few times, I would say that's probably a good place to start and if it needs to go up, um, we can.
We may make this retroactive.
Yeah.
For like a year and then we can go, how many times John's cut our dirt road?
I think I'm the only one that's cutting dirt roads right now.
Well, you wanna get the, all the particulars and get it, Ben?
Yeah, we can.
We'll include you on the emails to him. Back and forth.
With that, I would make a motion that we, uh, put our, uh, fees for our, our road fees for encroachment cuts and, uh, right of way easements, uh, on the agenda for public hearing for a fee change.
Okay, second that.
Okay, moving second there with. Put the fee changes on, into a public hearing and do it next November meeting, y'all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. Okay.
Good. Thank you much.
Thanks for bringing this up and keeping track of it.
It's tough, but we're trying to make it right.
Yeah.
I think it's a good thing, especially if we can get it online, like the phone company in LA called, teach them all themselves.
Yeah.
But Anna Lacey was saying, take her card over the phone.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks much. Thank you.
How would we enforce that, you know? Uh, if you can't, if you're not, if you're not catching them cutting, I guess you dig up whatever it is.
Um, we can talk to Ben about that. There's, there's some things we can do.
So I don't have a, the only thing I had for, um, Braden Daru was an email that was a bad email. I don't have a phone number. So if anybody has contact information for either Lacey or Braden, then we can reach out, but.
Are we early?
Yeah, not really.
Not really. I don't know about either one of their numbers.
So was you at the meeting last night when they were having a discussion?
No, I just texted them about it.
Okay, so what discussion took place, do you know?
Uh, they, the association don't want to pay for the class and, uh, the people until they've run a certain amount of time and then they'll reimburse them.
So.
After a year of running on the ambulance.
It would be up to the student to pay for the class. Um, and then after twelve, twelve months of active, of being an active E M T, it would be reimbursed, is that?
Yes.
Is that what the association suggests?
Uh, the association don't wanna pay for the class like we have in the past because Bridgerland said they would help with some of our people to put a class on and not pay and not charge us.
Uh, the reason you guys decided that, I'm guessing is cause we've, we've tried this before and participation wasn't, we paid the flat fee for
The class.
For, for the people. Some of them dropped out. A lot of them didn't make it through, so we paid to license, I don't, I don't, I don't remember the number, like six people, but only got like one person.
Yeah.
So it's better to, like, we still wanna pay for them. We don't want them to, we don't want them to have to do it, but
After a year.
After they've committed.
Okay. And some of the others, some of, some of them didn't even test.
So they made it through the class, but didn't finish.
Didn't even test, so.
What's our, what's our cost at this point in time? So what, what would it cost to go through? Um, obviously with Bridgerland, they're saying that they would do it for no cost.
Mm-hmm.
Probably just materials maybe, but, um, what about, um, the, uh, with Brandon and Lacey's course that they're teaching? What are, what are they charging?
Now, I'm not sure. This go, if we have to put money up for the class or if they just charge the students for the class, I, I, I'm, I don't know.
So like the Bridgerland program, just a base program, if you were to go by yourself, is a thousand dol- thousand eighty-five dollars? Yeah, not including time and gas, so probably like fifteen hundred to two thousand bucks on the high end. If you're thinking about a cost, Bill.
For the Bridgerland, they would do it here, so there would be an awful lot of costs.
Yeah. But I think if, if we're doing it like third party with these guys, that's probably what they would be charging us per student. So it does make sense just to go with Bridgerland for free.
I was thinking that they charged in their last class, it was twenty-five hundred or twenty-six hundred. Does that sound right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
Do you remember?
I can look. I just know that we paid the instructors, instructors. We gave Lacey a check.
And then in the end, we had to give another couple guys a check.
That helped with it.
Yeah.
Well.
So.
Um, were we supposed to call them or?
I was gonna see if I had there.
They're just on my, they're, I didn't take the message, but they wanted to appear on the agenda to discuss this and then they're not here, so I don't know.
Well, I can. I don't have Braden's.
I just sent you Sims, or Lacey's.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Hi, Lacey, this is Sam. Uh, we were just had you on the agenda this morning and wondered if you were still planning on coming. Call me back. Thanks, bye.
Well, now we have an hour. Do you think we could do some of these after-launch items? Oh, wait, no, you're, you're, okay. Norm is here instead of Mitch. Got it.
Hold on just a second. I got, I do have Braden's. See if he answers. Nope. So we can move on to Norm. Do you have, or you have anybody you're waiting for or just you?
No, Terry's with me.
Okay. You guys wanna come up?
Kai, I talked to her about it. She said she could come in for this also.
How are you?
Really good.
Terry, hi.
Hi, how are you?
How are you doing? You, you just stay down. How are you doing? Thank you.
It's T E R I and last name's E Y N O N.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have you guys state your name and both of you for the record.
Norman Meekum.
Terry Enon.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Norm.
Um, I've done this twice, uh, this process. Let me explain what we're doing here. This is up in the RV park, the Sweetwater RV park, trailer park, phase eight. These people here have forever been using property behind their lots, this pink area, as their own. It's, it was my property. I didn't worry about it too much. Uh, but they have their tough sheds on it and they parked their extra, you know, vehicle or something on it.
Toys.
And, and they would also access it coming back through my property, back this way to the backside of the properties. Well, I, I got ready to sell this property. I was going to develop it and just right now it's, I sold it to the Swensons. But in doing that, these people had come to me and said, well, can we just buy the property that we've been using anyway? And so to accommodate them, I said, yeah, we can, we can work that out. So we're just trying to find the best way to add a little bit of property to their lots and just the process. The, the first way we did it, uh, the first, uh, go around, uh, Kai said, I prefer it not be done that way is we did it as just an addition to each lot. Uh, and it would be a separate parcel. So this lot would be, still be this lot. This would be a separate parcel that they would own. Uh, that, and I agree with her, that's problematic sometimes because forty years down the road, when, when we're all gone and people are looking for the records, sometimes it's, it gets missed by title companies, cause they'll sell this lot and the title company misses that sometimes, so. It was, we felt, she felt it was better if we could make it do an amendment to the subdivision. So this is one lot, this is one lot, you know, it's all part of the same lot. It also isn't a separate parcel, so they couldn't put a separate RV on it. It's just one parcel.
And, and this is how the H O A prefers it to be done too, because the H O A wants to still have control over what can happen on those lots, so they want it to be part of the lot.
Part of the lot, yeah. So what Kai suggested was do a partial amendment of a subdivision, uh, with just these lots and, and show this as part of the lot. And it wouldn't require the whole subdivision to sign off. It would just require these people to sign off and they're all on board with it. They, they want to do this.
So should I hand them the partial amendment?
So we, we came back and did a partial amendment.
And, and this is how Kai wants it. This is the signatures she asked for and how she prefers it be done.
So we went about, and there are some mistakes on here. Um, I think he's got his, his Garden City, it's through Ridge County. Is that all cleaned up?
No, we. I've corrected those, yeah.
Okay. Um, so anyway, Kai is, Kai is calling, well, this is how I want it done. You know, I could record this and she said, I've already done several like this already this year. Uh, the county engineer in reviewing it, however, didn't seem to be, um, it was almost like, it was, it was like he was confused as to what was going on here because he had crossed out partial amendment, what he suggested.
I'm just gonna show you this because this is where I think he was confused. We were just trying to amend and he thought we were trying to vacate those lots.
He, he said, what should be done is these lots need to be vacated from the subdivision and then a new subdivision done showing this. So it's just a matter of process. Same thing ends up happening. It's just, um.
No, he, he thought that's what we were trying to do and said that that's problematic, but that's not what we were trying to do. So I think he misunderstood.
Has a vacated property.
Yeah, yeah. See, and we didn't wanna vacate it. So when he said it back to us, he had crossed off all the lot numbers. He had crossed off the amendment and, um, and, and, and the other thing I don't think he understood is that the other property was already sold a couple of years ago to Swensons and wasn't even part of the ownership because. A couple years ago to Swensons and wasn't even part of the ownership, because he wanted us to do a lot split from the other property. But that had already been done a couple years ago. So I think he was just confused on our intent.
The, these that you've given us.
Uh-huh.
Is including the pink up here, it's all one.
Right.
Like it will be.
Yeah, you can see that along this dotted line is where it is now.
This matches if I turn this over, oh, this matches.
Is this all private now?
It is.
Yeah.
The Swensons own that now.
How about this Monarch Drive, is that, I guess now that there's no subdivision, is that a problem, that, that looks like it was planning on going?
It's not, because, uh, Swensons are giving them an easement into the backside of their lot, so. And it's still a, it's still an HOA road to here, and then Swensons, if they wanted, if they needed access to the backside, he gave them. He's giving them easements.
So, as Bart reviewed it, he, he had some questions, so. Additional property added to individual lots, and the adjacent south property have not been properly subdivided.
That's 'cause he thought they were vacating it.
Yeah, and, and that, I think he was just confused about our intent.
I'd see that. So, I guess, but he's gonna have to sign the plat, so.
Right.
We need to kinda, I guess, find out what.
Wha- what does he mean that plat would not meet current subdivision standards, if the new sub- subdivision?
He thought this whole thing would be taken off and then a whole new subdivision done, rather than an amendment of the existing subdivision.
But we're not doing roads, roads are already in, we're not doing any utilities, they're already in. It's just, uh, increasing the size of their existing lot.
These guys have all, already bought.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, yeah, and they've been there. The existing lots have been there for, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five years.
Yeah, when we got ready to sell to Swensons, we would have had to go to them and say, move your storage sheds, move your, all of your stuff, and. So we thought this would be easier, but maybe not.
Way to clean it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and Kai has said, once we get these signatures, she can record it just like this.
Yeah, I'm not even sure there's, yeah, it's, it really depends on what you want here. We're willing to do whatever you want, but it, you know, there's not much, there's no engineering really to review, there's no roads to review. You know, utilities to review, no construction review, the only thing that would be reviewed is, is the, uh, legal description.
Yeah.
Which Kai does anyway.
Yeah. And we could have the engineer do it anyway.
So help me understand, just 'cause I don't understand the process, so the Swensons buy the property, do they buy it as it had been subdivided before? Or is it just revert to just raw land?
It's just raw land.
It's just raw land, because those phases, um, those future phases hadn't been recorded.
Okay.
So it was just like a, you know, idea of what was gonna happen and, and had been approved to be the subdivision.
Yeah.
But then it was recorded phase by phase, so Swenson bought like future phases that hadn't been.
The idea that this doesn't, this doesn't loop around, doesn't really matter, I mean, it matters for him, because that would make it so that it'd be harder to. To have infrastructure in the future, but I guess.
He, he has this road here that he accesses, and then he accesses another road here.
You got Mayfly over here.
Got the easement here.
I don't, I don't think he can ever subdivide in the future, the reason being, uh, these are private roads.
Yeah, the, eh, so the HOA owns all those roads, so that, they'll give Swenson access to drive through there, but not.
Okay.
But he's, they're not intending to subdivide, when, when we started subdividing, they just looked at and said, we don't want more neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're willing to buy it, you know, I just.
'Cause they own the property past that big metal fence as well, and.
Yeah, so they own all the adjacent.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so I don't, I don't have enough expertise to, I'm, I'm fine with like speeding processes up, but I would guess I would need help from these guys to know. If I would do anything wrong by.
So each of those on this amendment, each of these lot descriptions. Uh, would be amended to include the back property.
Correct.
And, and still keep it in, uh, the same parcel number, is that, is that right?
Keeps the same lot number, parcel number, and keeps the HOA being able to control, they're a very serious HOA over there.
And this is, uh.
I know.
They do not have a parcel number at this point in time, because it's, it's this parcel. I mean, this, this land was included out in this parcel out here, right?
That's correct, I just didn't, I just held it up when it was sold. Trying to accommodate these guys.
So these lots over here, Norm, is they, are they, is that, are they even gonna exist?
That's a, that's a separate phase, and yes, they, they exist and it's a separate phase.
And it's been recorded.
It's right here, Bill, I can show you. If you look at the, so they're talking about the line would cut right across to here.
Yeah.
So they're, these guys over here already exist.
Right.
Yeah, and they're in a different phase, they're not affected at all.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm all for it, if it's, if we're not breaking any rules, I guess I would just need to know if we are.
Yes, I wonder if Kai is in, can I check?
Sure.
She's on the agenda, so maybe she might be.
She told us that she'd come over and talk to you, so I assumed she would be here.
So this didn't need to go before the P and Z?
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm wondering.
Mitch said it did not, so when I turned it in to Mitch, he said that it doesn't go to the P and Z. Um, but that he wants to send it to the engineer, just because he doesn't know what to do with it, and maybe the engineer would. So we send it to the engineer and, um, then the engineer thought, I, I thought we were trying to remove it. From the subdivision, which the HOA would never go, and we would not want to do. So the, the engineer did say, we also have the option, I'll, I'll wait. Hi.
We've explained this to them, um. I, I think John's question was, you know, he's, he's okay with it as long as they were doing. Yeah, we're not breaking any rules, as he said.
Doing everything legal.
I just don't know enough about the process to, you know, or can we just, can we just do it, you know? Yeah.
So I took Norm this, I think that the engineer was being very nitpicky and going off of. U ente county rules, which every recorder does things differently, but, um. The engineer wants it to just be done with like a lot line adjustment, which we haven't done that in the Rich County Recorder's Office since two thousand and six. We've always required a partial plat amendment for anything that changes anything that has to do with lot lines in a subdivision. So I think he's going off of a different county's rules and not Rich County's rules. There's, Utah State has also passed a law, I can't think of the code off the top of my head, but I've talked to Ben about it, I don't know if he's brought it up to you. Of adding it to the county code, that a recorder can. Enforce a plat amendment for options like this, which is what we've been doing anyway since oh-six. Um, so I don't, I don't know what the engineer's grief is with this. But as far as I'm concerned, Norm is doing what I've asked him to.
And the engineer says we still can do it, but he's telling us different than the way that Kai wants it, 'cause he says we need to bring him in. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven different boundary line adjustment agreements. And then adjust their boundary line to each of those lots.
Which is not a requirement in my office, as long as it is on the plat, the legal description is on the plat, I don't care. I think that's just more work and money for you guys to do, where if it's on the plat, I will accept it and make the necessary changes.
So the legal description will include that extra property and just make it all on one.
Because you've got your overall legal description here, and then you've got each of your little legal descriptions for each lot in the calls, in the lots themselves. So that has everything I need that is required for me to make the change. So I don't know where the miscommunication is coming in between the two parties, I'm not sure, but as far as I'm concerned. Norm has done everything I've asked for him for this to be recorded. I think the engineer's just wanting extra steps that is not required in my office.
And I'm okay doing whatever, I just need some directions to.
Right.
So.
And, and it seems like for future, to have it right on the plat and have it all together, rather than seven different. Um, things to look up, that this seems much easier for future, for people looking at it, besides us.
Garden City does a similar thing, they will have, like, they have to record, like, for example, not in a subdivision, but just. Two pieces of property, two meets and mounts descriptions, they require that they record the deed with me, and then they have their own separate deed that they also have to record. Which I, that's a Garden City thing, um, and as far as I'm concerned, that's just an extra step that we don't need to take. And I think this is a very similar situation. If you guys want to make them do both, I will record it, but as far as I'm concerned, the deed itself will not do anything. The plat is the.
I can see your point in, down the, down the road, they might be separated unknowingly.
If it's two parcels.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I had that problem with Maryland before, I mean, it, it happened.
Yeah.
I s- I saw it come up, where it's, it's easier for the title company to miss it.
Yeah.
And the other thing that happens is, um, the HOA doesn't have control over it, so like technically they could go in and do things that.
They want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as our end goes, once that plat is recorded, each of those lots will get its own new parcel number.
Yep.
And the current parcel number they have will no longer exist, so if the title company is doing their job correctly, they should be able to find that.
Right, if it's done this way, the plat.
If it's done just with, just the plat, yeah.
Yeah.
And it will be updated on all of our like eighteen by eighteen plats that we do every year, so. And then once we move over to all digital, like with our GIS, the original plats will no, the original lots will no longer exist. They will be replaced with new lots, so.
So, since this is affecting seven, seven different people, I would assume they would have had, did you guys do a public hearing? I would assume you'd have to just do a public hearing and that would be the only step. In, I, I would think the planning and zoning would have to approve it, do a public hearing, and then it's done. Uh, since it's affecting seven people.
And, and.
But we've got the seven people signing.
Yeah, well.
We, we haven't, because this, we just turned in, this is, we just turned it in and got the feedback from the engineer.
Yeah, and Mitch's very first email was said, said this does not need to go to planning and zoning.
I don't think he's right about that.
Okay.
But I, I think planning and zoning, um, they're probably gonna just have some of the same questions, but I, I would assume that they would be fine with.
Okay.
With this, and if it's a public hearing, which, you know, probably nobody's gonna come to, um, I would assume after that's approved, it's done. Uh, but since it's not just Norm adding property into property he owns, amending all his own lots. And affects the seven people, I think that does trigger a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so then, do we still need those seven people to sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and just notify the neighbors around them and, and I, I think.
And I think he has signature blocks for all, all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and as soon as P and Z approves, I think, then we just sign it, and we don't, we don't even need to talk about it again, it would be done.
Okay. Now, Mitch typically, you know, waits for the engineer to sign off on it before he goes to P and Z, so.
Um, I think that's where Bill would probably come in the most handy, is talking to the engineer and seeing.
How, how, how get his clarification on it, and make sure that he understands exactly what we're doing, so.
And Kai was telling me she's done this before, actually this year, you said you've done so.
I've done a lot of amendments, yeah.
Sometimes the processes are, need to be re-clarified every now and then.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's actually, I think this, I think it's actually easier than even coming to talk, talking to us. I can, we can call Mitch too and let him know that there, there would need to be a public hearing.
Okay, and I talked to Mitch about this, uh, the other day, and he said, uh, he said, just go ahead and handle it. And he said, whatever, whatever process the commissioners say, that's what we'll do.
Okay, I would, I guess my motion would be is let's send this plat back to planning and zoning and have them do their review process on it.
Mitch says plat amendments don't go through planning and zoning, nor have public hearings per ordinance passed last year.
Yeah, but state code says they do.
I was under the impression they have to go through P and Z as well.
Well, I think either way, guys, we could probably, as, at the latest, they come back to us in November and we can get things done. You know, it, it, it might happen before that, but it sounds like we need to clarify with Mitch what's going on.
You, you talk to Mitch, whatever, and the engineer, whatever, and just let me know what you want me to do, that's, that's what we'll do.
Is November too late of timeframe?
No.
Okay.
No, we're good.
We'll, we'll kind of this forward and, and decide what, what process and details we better do.
Well, here's a question for you, Norm, is this the one that you had Hickman draw up all of those deeds for originally?
Yes.
So they've already done their boundary line agreement deeds, and I told them it wouldn't work without a plat amendment, so as far as the county engineer goes, that's already been done.
We, we've done what he said.
Yeah.
And then Kai didn't like it.
I, yeah, it was me, I was being beaten in the butt.
No, that, I mean, we, we just want it done right, we don't care which way.
We originally did just deeds for each one.
Yeah.
Which is kinda what the county engineer said, okay, do it this way, and.
But we had already done that.
Yeah, we don't, yeah. Great.
So if he says to do it that way, that's already done, and we're.
Okay.
Then we just need something that Kai feels good.
Then we, then we'd have both the deeds and this, the way you said Garden City does it anyway, so. Whatever, whatever you want, that's, I mean, we'll, we'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. We could get him a motion that if this is all good and everything, that I, that we sign it. Unless you wanna wait and see.
And, and we can come back.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever you guys want.
You guys don't get very many people to these meetings, so, you know, we better.
And we just love the Dr. Rand.
Oh, you don't.
I do.
I know, Terry doesn't.
By the way, your friend's.
Thank you.
Cutest thing.
Thank you.
Oh, he is a neat character.
Wasn't there a motion on the table, that it did?
Didn't get second and done.
Didn't get second, so sorry.
How are you? Stay down, stay down. I was rooting me not to stand up first, my hands are so cold. State your name and.
Hi, Nikki Weston with the Economic Development Camp, the Board for Rich County.
And I'm Sean Milne, uh, Director of Community and Economic Development for Bear River Association of Governments or RAG. Uh, acting on your behalf for economic development.
Perfect, thank you.
We are here to present, uh, some names for the Economic Development Board.
Okay.
They were discussed previously, the ones that have agreed to serve are Tammy Lenhart, myself, Nikki Weston. Joel Marler. Do you need where they're from? Woodruff.
That might be good.
Cam Bell.
Who's the Woodruff?
Joel Marler, M A R L E R.
Is he on the city town council right now?
Yes, he is. Cam Bell, from here in Randolph. Thad Willis, from Lake Town. Curtis Moldenhauer, from Garden City. Sean, Mitch, and Mark Alexander are third. Sean, Mitch, and Mark Alexander are third, are, completes our seven.
Yeah, and just to clarify, Mitch Paulson and myself would be uh, ex officio, non-voting members of the board.
Mitch, oh, is there one more?
Mitch Paulson, um, Mark Alexander.
Besides me?
Me.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, Mike?
Mark.
Mark.
He's.
With Bridgeland Technical College, he's over at the Business and Entrepreneur Center.
So he's not a vote.
He is a voting member.
Okay.
Uh, he would be, he is right now, we would ask that you continue to support him in that role. He represents the workforce development required position on the board.
Okay.
We would like to ask that Tammy Lindhart, myself, and Mark Alexander stay on for two years.
To conclude at the end of December twenty seventh?
Yes. And then the rest, we'll see how they do and we'll give them a year appointment.
A year appointment.
So it'll be done until the end of twenty six, so it'll be a year and a few months.
State wants them to be staggered and this would allow us to see if there's a good fit after they've had the time to serve and. Then we'd be back this time next year to see if we get them for another two years, or at your discretion, you know, someone else, but. So today we're asking for uh, that complement of proposed board members, if we could get your authorization to proceed with them and at those terms to be concluding on those. December thirty first of the years noted.
I made a motion that we appoint. Um. The board members that you presented, Mark Alexander, Campbell, Joel Marler, Thad Willis, Tammy Lindhart. Who am I missing, Nikki Weston, I missing one?
Curtis.
Curtis Moldenhauer. And Curtis Molden. To the board, to the Economic Development Board.
On the terms that they wanted?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion. Okay, move the second dollar in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, we have a second item to, for your consideration today and that is annually, there is a Rural Communities Opportunity Grant or RCOG for short. It is an annual application that at the end of this month that we are now in, uh, October thirty first, we. Need to have submitted if we are interested and we are expressing that the board thinks that there's a good opportunity and ask for your. Um, acknowledgement, your approval for me to submit a grant on your behalf for that grant. It is a competitive grant, it is not the same as one that you approved a couple of months ago that's annual funding. Um, that we've already discussed, you've already voted on, this one is competitive. It's up to six hundred thousand dollars per applicant. It is for any counties of the third class and lower and. Any communities within a second-class county that are small enough in population. The, the state legislature increased the amount of competitiveness, decreased the amount of funding this last year. So, uh, I don't want to make ho- hopes too high. The suggestion and the request for authorization is for an application up to a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. To help satisfy the charrette program that the USU Landscape Architecture Students. And their professors have recommended to Garden City through the Chamber of Commerce. On accomplishing some element of that long-term plan. Um, the board has discussed what some of those may be and we would need to meet after your authorization or direction if granted. To further refine what those details might be, one of the elements discussed has been as an example. Parking lot for public parking to not congest some of the streets, but still increase retail viability for some of the seasonal tourism. Um, locations, restaurants, dining, that sort of thing in Garden City. That's just one example that's been discussed, but um, I also defer to Chairman Nikki or any questions you might have.
So. We think that Garden City is going to end up like Moab. Where there's lots of people and if we don't start thinking about what our plan is going to be. We'll be dealing with some of the same issues that they have. This plan looks into the future, what Garden City's gonna look like in twenty years. A little forward thinking we think would be really great. It's not a lot of money, but it would give us a, a good place to get started and.
So. Did you say six hundred grand?
You can go up to six hundred thousand dollars per applicant, you have twenty-four months to expend the funding.
This is a hundred twenty-five thousand.
Yep, we've asked for just.
So, how does this interact with what's already been done by the USU students?
So they've done the study, but now how do you implement the study is the big quandary. And the Chamber of Commerce has expressed some. Angst, desire, passion towards taking it from a three-ring binder to use it, you know. Flipping kind of term to now what, now what do we do? If this grand vision is something that there's community support for to make sure. That that community doesn't suffer some of the same challenges of growth like Park City Deer Valley did from a mining town or Moab or. Even Canav or uh, Hurricane, the Urkin these days with their proximity to the national parks. That, that study envisioned, okay, how do you, how do you expand services which include roads and major utilities? To mixing in either short-term rental, affordable housing for a workforce that caters around tourism and that seasonality. To even Heritage Park and Pickleville Playhouse being moved over to there and, and, and how do you make. A walkable community so everybody doesn't need to drive and clog up the roads, but at the same time, how do you make, you know, a nice curb appeal? Where some places currently have a draw, but may not look all that great and inviting for pedestrians, so people still. Even drive to go as little as two or three blocks, cause there's not a lot of interconnectivity. I'd use an example, Vernal City has encountered this problem, e- even though we wouldn't think of them as tourism. They've uh, used programs like this to do some of their streetscape. And in recent years, they've taken what many of us that have gone through Vernal for a number of years. And we see that kind of nice inviting pedestrian walkway along Main Street, but it's still kinda busy. Lot of traffic, a lot of those Main Street businesses had both a front and a back in- entrance. And the back has looked kind of uninviting, like it might be an, only an employee-only entrance. Dumpster's right up against the back and they've changed that to now mirror the Main Street side with hanging baskets, poured concrete, you know, sidewalks. Put the dumpsters and kind of fenced in area, the same with these USU students in their program that uh. Mark Smoot and others have, have um, been engaged with over the last few years.
Did you say this is Vernal that did that?
Yeah.
Co- the Cobble Rock Block or they, they had a name for it?
They, they did and I'm sorry, I don't remember it, there's actually a really great video of it, both um. That Vernal City has created kind of a customized small-town revival website of its own.
Yeah.
Um, as an example of what can be done and.
That was all the RCOG?
No, it's, it's a bunch of different programs that they've used over the years, um, but, but similarly like that. The suggestion is using the RCOG in this case, part of the reason why it's only a hundred twenty-five thousand, cause we, we could ask for more. Is that there's a ten percent grant match in order to go forward with this. The chamber has some money and it would be awfully nice if we could use that, but we also held back from the annual Rural County Grant. We held back some money, if you recall, your authorization to be a match for something like this. So we could use that money that we've already set aside, or we might be able to use the chamber's money or other sources. Cause the match is not required by the state to be by the county or just the city. But it can be from the Chamber of Commerce, private business, nonprofit, you name it. If we had an RDA or CRA up here, we could also use that funds, but uh, that kind of funding. So we could ask for more realistically, a hundred twenty-five won't go as far, but it might be able to do some title work or an acquisition of some land. To make it official that it's owned for public space. Those are the kind of details that the Economic Advisory Board would want to ferret out with greater detail between now and the end of the month when the application would be due.
And the match on that is?
Ten percent, because of Rich County's size, it's ten percent. So very manageable with the money we set aside, we actually have many multiples of that from the money we set aside from the Rural County Grant. Um, but we didn't wanna look greedy, I, I don't know the exact formula, they don't disclose it Goio. As to how they weight and rank these, there is some subjective nature to those that are on the committee that weight and rank these applications. But they do kind of have a, a formula. When you ask for the lion's share, it kind of ranks you a little bit lower because there's, there's only so much money to give. And we didn't wanna send a signal that if we didn't get a grander amount of money, that, you know, it's all or nothing. I can, I can tell you from past experience with other applicants that I've served. If they feel like your project is good enough that it warrants their strong consideration, but they don't think they could make. The amount you've asked for, they are prone to giving you a call before a final determination and asking you if it's scalable. Meaning, hey, what if we only give you fifty percent of this, would you be able to do some of your project?
Right.
And so we could give an answer like that, um, but again, the, the bigger issue for us in the process is. Your guidance and approval towards an application by month's end. And then convening the Economic Development Advisory Board or CEO Board. To make sure that we work out those kind of details to make sure it's a quality application. There was something along these lines submitted only by the chamber last year, but. Um, this year we obviously kind of wanna tighten that up if we're gonna make a submission at all.
Is Garden City submitting something?
I don't know if the city itself is, I don't know.
Is there, is there a conflict when there's two overlapping political subdivisions?
No, there, th- the, the challenge would be if they both want money for the same project.
Yeah.
And the state would say, it doesn't sound like you two are coordinated.
Yeah.
But as a matter of fact, Northern Utah has not submitted as many requests for the RCOG in the last few years as other parts of the state. So they're in, openly encouraging us to have more applications. Last year we were successful with Providence City, um, I'd helped them write their grant for the full six hundred thousand. But they also had two point seven million dollars to contribute, so it was more than the thirty, uh, uh, in, in their particular case. It's a forty percent match and it was far in excess of a forty percent match required when you had two point seven million dollars of city money. Asking for six hundred thousand for this, but it was for two specific sewer-related projects. One was a sewer lift station, one was upsizing some pipe. And they were both tied to a proportionality of that capacity going towards economic development. Admittedly, some of the capacity of the lift station, pipe would be for residential development. They don't want these applications to be anything about community development, only economic development. But because those projects, when fully constructed. Would enable some undeveloped ground in Providence to become economically viable by being shovel-ready, it qualified. Um, we've done the same with Tremont on their Main Street revitalization project. Um, uh, childcare grants in Cache County, uh, I mean, there, there's a number of different examples. As it relates to economic development, but it, it wouldn't be a problem if both Garden City and Rich applied. You just wanna make sure that they're not for the same interest, yeah.
They want us to go to their meeting next week. So we'll be further coordinated then.
So when was your guys' last meeting, your last?
It was about a week or two ago.
And, and I guess I'm a little bit confused, I, I understand what you're saying, but do you have a clear direction of, of what you want to. Submit for that RCOG grant, cause I kinda hear, I'm kinda hearing two or three different ideas.
You're right.
Are you looking for some like input?
Yeah, we would love the commission's input. After all, I specifically work for you guys and the board is an advisory board for you.
Yeah.
And we specifically work for you and this is your acknowledgement that, yeah, this, of all the things, economic development that we could do. That we could apply for, we're saying that this is the one that's of the highest priority to us, the county. I can help other municipalities write their grant too and that is true, I mean, I do that sort of work, but I haven't been asked by any other municipalities in this county to do that this year.
Yeah.
But if we submit something, it is, it is your acknowledgement of saying, we support the recommendations made by the board and we think this is the highest value thing to ask for.
Cause you were talking about maybe a potential public parking. Or assisting the USU to continue planning?
Oh, one of the same, cause they have recommended strongly to have public parking.
Okay.
That if you want pedestrians to be able to go to and from different locations in Garden City and, and not lead to the kind of congestion. During busy weekends already, let alone if more tens of thousands of people come in the next twenty years per weekend. You just can't widen enough at some point, right, with a road. But it is acknowledged by UDOT, that Garden City would see that turned into a five-lane road as it comes to the T. Okay, that, that might be in the future and that's UDOT and you guys with your authority will get to work with them on that, that's not our purview. But if that is the goal eventually, well, how do we get people to already get out of their car and if they can walk two or three blocks rather than getting in their car again? And going from here for shakes to there for fries or whatever the stop might be for. Then we have to acknowledge, why aren't they walking already? And the USU students are proposing and make some good anecdotal evidence, you know, reasons why. It's because it's not very inviting for pedestrians to just park in one place and then walk, because there's interconnected, you know, walking that they feel safe and. You know, it's, that they're not illegally trespassing on somebody's land or whatever, parking comes into play with that. And so, you know, there's some suggested mid-block off of Main Street, kinda behind parking suggestions. And it may be that something like this, this is what we were proposing. Be as simple as, do we start acquiring on behalf of a public entity so that it remains public parking, not fee-for and. Not buying somebody's, you know, self-enrichment purposes, but buying some parcels in order to kind of build that into existence. Uh, again, Vernal had this similar kind of experience, except in their case. It was used by businesses already, it was just chock full of potholes, it was not clearly delineated where the parking stalls were anymore, it didn't look inviting. And in, in addition to the pedestrian walkways I already referenced. Uh, this video that I alluded to earlier that you can find online through Goio's website, they show how they totally revamped. And they did that through this particular grant, that, that particular parking lot was through this grant. Um. So, i- it, it's a similar kind of spin on, well, we've seen that done and successfully applied for and awarded somewhere else in the state. We have a charrette with these USU students that the Chamber of Commerce seems to be quite hot to support. And as uh, Madame Nikki already mentioned. You know, whether we like it or not, it seems as though as the WASAT front grows, this will become more and more of a popular weekend. You know, summer retreat during. That growth, so how do we make sure that we are ahead of that instead of waiting to always do catch-up? Which I, I, anyway.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, um. I mean, one thing that it's always been in my mind is, and this may not even qualify for RCOG, is but some type of county-owned two of. Two-plex or four-plex that we could, you know, like we'll hire, we'll hire a deputy, but he has nowhere to live. Somewhere that could be a landing pad for workforce, um, whether that's here in Randolph. You know, somewhere that's, that the rent is, you know, almost subsidized, almost free, but while they. You know, build the savings or whatever to, to purchase potential property, um. That's something that I think would be beneficial to Rich County, just a, just a property that's owned by the county that county employees could use. As they come in and launch off to other spots. Uh, but I also know that public parking would be almost like a, y- you know, a hub that. And, and there could be visitor elements added to it, you know, down the road, like a shuttle to the beach or whatever. But I, I think the idea, and I think parking where it's been used already in RCOG grants would be an easy thing for the first year or two to, to go after. I think it'd be hard to find land that's for sale, you know, that, that, that grant would even come close to matching, yeah.
Yeah, Nikki and I were talking about that, we, we don't disagree. And thus the challenge of ever being able to provide parking that's not private property. Either fee-for or the higher-better use being development of a building, right? And so thus we find ourselves in this constant pickle of. You, you know, from, from economic development and community development, both sides. In city planning, parking lots in Walmart are the worst investment in your downtown area, the worst investment. Cause square footage cost, they don't produce a lot, but everybody has parking minimums, it's just what cities do. They say if you've got X amount of square footage space, we expect X amount of square footage dedicated to parking. But those parking lots are typically built for a Black Friday, like big population that rarely comes about to fill every single parking space in Walmart. But you apply the same logic to the square footage ratio for Walmart as you do in mom and pop. So, you know, the, again, kinda coming to this pickle, you have these downtown areas in smaller communities. They didn't have that same kind of expectation and so you don't have parking, even at BRAG. We don't have much public parking in BRAG and yet they've converted a fire station to new retail and dining. So they've changed the traditional use, they've increased the demand on parking, but there's no more parking. They didn't make the fire station get converted from business and retail to include more parking. You've got a credit union that owns a big old parking lot with half of its spaces being empty and it's like what a waste of space. And so you have a bunch of people clamoring for blocks, trying to find parallel parking and some of it's three hours, so you have people planning. You know, a timer around, leaving their office, go move their car, try to plan musical, like you guys have the same problem with a Main Street-ish area. You're not wrong commissioner, I don't, we, we've addressed, like where do you get the real estate for that? Because if you, if you get it too much on the edge of town, people aren't gonna walk that.
Yeah.
So you might be able to get it more affordable somewhere else, but.
Well, I thi- what what about the idea of just a long-term land lease, instead of buying the property? Do like a twenty, thirty, forty, fifty year, cuz I think some of these legacy owners don't necessarily wanna sell the property. But they'd be fine with a parking lot on land they owned, it because it's not being developed. You know, it's it's like Raspberry Square, for example, there's a couple legacy owners. Uh that may for a thirty year lease, you know, let you put a parking lot there, it's still their property. It's just for the next thirty years, it's gonna be a parking lot.
That's a really interesting proposal and that comes back to you guys as policymakers. Do you feel like spending public funds for the benefit of getting to use something for a payback period of thirty years? Is warranted for the X amount of funds you'd spend from the public to enrich private property? I think, I mean, that that's almost a loaded way to present it. I think that that would be a good ROI. Two years, probably not, but you know, if you had a thirty year lease, that sounds like it'd be good for this kind of money. But then there's also the added money to actually build the parking lot, so this this amount of money may be just enough to get a lease. But we all acknowledge it's, you you can't touch an acre worth of asphalt for a hundred twenty-five thousand. Let alone the design work you need to have before concrete curb encounter to make sure the edges don't crumble within a few years and all that kinda stuff, but.
I imagine if you had a pretty good plan, though, you could pull in money from other places too.
That is the hope, that is actually what the charrette suggests. Uh, the students program and their professors were on a call with some folks as a follow-up this last spring. And there may be a bit of a disconnect from academia on just how easy municipalities and government jurisdictions create money. But the the plan was still acknowledging that it should bring bring in a a a mix of private investment. As well as public investment, because if the public has a goal of X, then it should be invested if private. Has a profit motive, then they should invest in it, and it and it even suggested things like. The Chamber of Commerce, which clearly is mostly private if if it follows like most chambers, but nonprofits may have a goal to play in this too. Um, if I can just real quickly, cuz I don't wanna get too far off of it, but you touched on housing and that's actually a. The Cache Summit is at the end of this month and twenty seventh, twenty eighth. Twenty eighth, the Riverwoods Conference Center is when the Cache Summit takes place, there's gonna be a whole breakout session. Following a keynote session by Steve Waldrup, who is the state's housing czar. Um, on these kind of ownership opportunities because workforce housing continues to be a problem. In certain communities in Box Elder County, County and definitely around Logan. Employers have been saying now for a couple of years, I can't pay my employees enough. To be able to afford four hundred five thousand dollar starting price on a starter home. I just can't pay him enough. And when we have a limited supply, we're not, the the price isn't dropping. So there's gonna be a whole breakout session just to talk about this ongoing challenge. South Jordan and some other places have used deed restrictions as a way to. Accomplish part of what you were saying about your own workforce with like law enforcement. And that the deed restrictions, um, for one particular development, i- it it had ten percent of the units built in a condominiumized product. Ten percent set aside for public employees. And you know, it rides for like ten or twenty years and after that, then it's fair market open to anybody, but this continues to be a. A big kind of topic.
It is something that we have discussed as a board every year that I've been on the board. Um, the commit, the. Who are they? Over in Garden City. You told me earlier. Anyway, the, um, chamber.
Oh, sorry.
All of the chamber. Members are very concerned about housing, they don't have any way to house their employees either. It's definitely a concern in the county. We talk about it, um, we have not come up with a good solution.
See, and and initially, my concern's just for the county, you know, administratively like, well, we need housing. You know, and it's fortunate for us that we maybe have some tools to help ourselves out and I'm sympathetic to the the chamber. But, um, we need to solve our problem for the county as far as housing. Um, and so maybe there's some pilot program, you know, I don't want voucher based, you know, section eight housing. We just need, we need property that people can live in. And maybe even some sort of rebate program where they pay in to rent and they, you know, to savings for them to do a down payment on something.
That's part of that breakout session. Having heard parts of the presenter's expectation during that, that that's one of the things that he's talked about. He uh he's got a couple of suggestions and I don't know the full presentation, but that's actually one of them where it's a co-op. Um, in my mind, just my two cents, it almost sounds like the HOA owns. Everything and you rent from them and when you decide to move out, you get a certain amount of market appreciation that goes with you. And you, you know, the first rate of refusal is back to the HOA, again, not the right term, but the co-op, but. Just to kinda give it that perspective, you you must sell to the HOA. They buy it at fair market value, which is where you cash out and then somebody else comes along and buys into it. I I mean, he he's, he's proposing a bunch of things that have been tried somewhere coast to coast. As a way of saying, you know, here here's a menu of unattractive options, which one would you like the most? Because absent of a good fair market, a a free market really, and we don't have a free market, we've regulated it to the point that. You know, neighbors that don't pay property tax on X parcel now get to dictate the building when in the forties and fifties. After the completion of World War Two. We didn't have Euclidean zoning and you mostly got to build what you wanted. And we had a lot of mixed use where somebody might live upstairs. And work on the main floor, maybe it was retail, maybe it was a bookkeeper, maybe it was a small retailer before. Big box stores that we all know and love today, but you know, you didn't have, you didn't have the same kind of zoning paradigm that we're all used to today. And so we've, we we've kinda stifled the free market, but in theory. A free market would make us wiggle today because it would be build, maybe build. And you'd have that housing match because some developer at the low end. Would say, well, I'm not here to build six hundred thousand McMansions, I just wanna build two hundred fifty thousand starter homes and. You know, fifteen thousand dollars profit per is enough for me. But right now, between the Great Recession chasing away a lot of tradespeople that didn't come back after the economy rebounded. We have a restriction of craftsmen who can actually build homes. And we have a restriction through zoning on actually being able to build the kind of homes people can afford. And so if you have a limited amount of developers and they can build a four hundred five thousand dollar starter. Or they can build a two hundred fifty thousand starter and both of them make ten percent profit, they'll take the four hundred five thousand dollar one all day long. Cuz ten thousand is forty thousand, or ten percent is forty thousand versus twenty-five thousand for the same hours that they're building the same.
It's crazy that four hundred thousand dollars would be a starter home.
That's what it is, right?
Even in Bear Lake County, you cannot build a starter home for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, my son's trying.
Yeah. You can, but it's gonna take a really long time and a lot of good deals. Trust me, I know.
So Commissioner, you're spot on, whether it's the county needing to look at its own self-interest or its employee base or it's the chamber. The problem is, we we just have a need and, you know. There there's an argument to be made about that, traditionally would be thought of as community development, a grant like this traditionally would not cover that. But more and more, we're seeing how it's stifling Utah's economy to not have housing for our own kids and grandkids.
Yeah, I'd say initially, I would be fine with you guys pursuing the idea of public parking. Um, if you need to have a decision to submit a grant. Uh, it sounds like it's due at the end of the month. But I don't know what these guys say, but overall, the CEO Board, I would love them to take a look at that housing idea and, you know, a publicly. Or public-private partnership of some sort.
When we discussed it in the past, they were looking specifically on the Garden City side. We decided it couldn't be done over there, that it was just too expensive. So we looked at possibly someplace at the junction that would serve both sides. Um, the problem is buying the land.
I might be able to find you even some donated land if we could figure it out at the junction.
Does the county have tax sale? Th- this is more rhetorical right now, it doesn't need to be even more cuz I appreciate you've. Allowed us to deviate a little bit from quick votes, but if you had tax sale land that you own. That could be utilized this way, uh Logan has started, Logan City has started doing that kind of development. To authorize denser kind of develop, cuz that land, the land cost is what's driving up so much of this. Yes tariffs and yes, you know, restrictions on certain materials that go into building a home, but the land cost by and far is the main driver. For the price of homes. And if you had land that you could also deed restrict because you already own it and work it out as part of the development. We could work to attract a developer to build for you the kind of housing. That you you could do on land that now you get to kinda control what the higher better use of the land is. Bragg's actually. I I I don't wanna say too much cuz it's not mine that I'm taking point on, but. As three members of the Bragg Governing Board, you may wanna ask our Executive Director Lucas about this, he's got something in the works, so.
Well, gentlemen, um. Do you need a motion to pursue that grant?
Yes, sir, please.
Second.
Okay, remember the second that that you pursue that grant for what, one twenty-five? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the motion carries.
Thanks, thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Bryce, come on up.
How you guys doing today?
Good, good, good.
Nice fancy things for your names and everything. Let's get the part over.
Yeah, Bryce. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Bryce Milton, I'm the Rich County Emergency Manager. Get the hard part over, begin with.
I was with Bryce for a couple hours yesterday with Jamie from DEM, helping train Joey.
Yeah, I think we got him pretty well.
Yeah, yeah, and I I should've gone to something like that sooner because it helped me, um. Recognize a lot of the stuff that you were doing that you just weren't loud about, you know? And it made me more appreciative of what you've been doing over the last twenty years when she was asking all these questions and you knew the answers and. All the paperwork that was filled out, she said you did a good job.
I appreciate that. So anyway, you know, today's a good day to give it up, I guess. And, uh, first of the month, just watching the. Deal on my iPhone, uh, of the Emergency Manager meeting. I guess FEMA's in horrible mess and all that kinda stuff.
Cuz of the shutdown?
Yeah, and then all of the grants and everything are all, uh, basically, uh, screwed up. So I don't know what they're gonna do with money this year, but, uh. Anyway, bring you guys up to date. Me resigning, then it's gonna be up to Joey to handle all of the EMPG stuff. Now, he he's gotta get some training to be able to administer it, so he can't get any money right now. If there was any money, but he'll be able to get it retroactive. Other than that.
Well, um. We haven't officially appointed Joey, so at this point in time, um, we just accept your resignation. And I, for one, who have worked with you for many, many years, Bryce, appreciate the work you've done and and the. Diligence that you've had and in continuing to, uh, keep us. Involved with the state emergency management, uh, opportunities that are there and the many things that you've done, our our plans and. And those things, so I just wanna congratulate you and thank you for, uh, the twenty years of. Twenty-three years that you've served in this position.
I appreciate that, means a lot.
We've been, we've been fortunate, we haven't had huge tragedies or had any big. Things we've had to deal with, but, um, we've been. Continually working and planning and training for to be prepared and and you've been very instrumental in leading that cause and. And, uh, done done good, uh, for our county, I just wanna thank you personally and as a a commissioner as well, so.
Well, I appreciate those comments, like I say, it's been been a good activity for me, it's. Got me so, I've met a lot of people, met, stayed in with the, uh, state, that kinda stuff. Get me out of, not out of trouble, cuz I was usually in trouble. You know?
Yeah, we appreciate your hard work and diligence. All all those years, does that, that doesn't include when you were Commissioner, does it?
No.
So there's years on serving the county beyond that twenty-three years also.
So I say, it's sort of difficult for me to write this last night, I'm thinking about all the good times I've had here in the county. And that kinda stuff, all the nice people, that's really, it's always easy to quit a job, it's really hard to quit. Being associated with people, it's always the hard part, but, uh. Time has come and I guess it's as good a time as any. State is changing a lot, you know, emergency management is getting a lot more complex. And I'd like to say better, but I don't believe it is, it's getting so wound up with more, uh. Oh, just all types of things that you've gotta do, you know, and all this other type of stuff, so. I'll let somebody that's younger, got more ambition, take off on it.
Well, definitely yesterday with Joey, you could tell that he's in a good position to do it as he's pulling up his spreadsheets and, you know. Taking notes and and navigating complex things pretty well. But one thing I, you know, just to say one more thing about you, Bryce, that I really appreciated is that you, um. You were, you were pretty frugal, you know, you didn't, you didn't spend a lot of money. You look at some of these other counties and and they have, their emergency managers are. Uh, you know, they have a a deputy manager and then they have a huge budget that they.
Right.
Um, and so you've done pretty good at at keeping the job inexpensive.
That came from yours as a commission, you know? Yeah, I tried to, I tried to represent the county as it is, and that is, it's a rural county. And agriculture related and tourism related. A lot of time, people would wanna say, well, you gotta do this and you gotta do that, like the big county, that's no. We're not a big county, we really can't, we really can't do it that way, so, uh, it, uh. No, I just hate to spend money. Even my own, you know, so.
Well, we appreciate it.
But anyway, like I said, I think everything is caught up to date, I made applications for EMPG, I made the supplemental application. Joey has copies of all those. I'm assuming he'll be the guy, then I'll send him my files. I've given him all of my, uh, hardware stuff I had that I've accumulated over the years. Been worthwhile, but a lot of, a lot of it's junk now, cuz I've been there for so long, you know, but, uh. I'll just go ahead and continue to help him when I can and, uh. Hopefully, things will go smoothly, I'm sure there'll be a bump or two along the way.
Will you be available if we need to just call you and get some advice on some stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Or do you want us to leave you alone?
No, no, go ahead and keep me involved, you know, I wanna stay involved in county, that kinda stuff.
If there were, if there were board positions that opened up other places, would you be interested in serving on those?
Yeah, I'm somewhat interested into opening on the fire board, I don't know why, but.
The Garden City Fire Board?
Yeah, the one that, uh, gonna be vacated here.
You know, having somebody that's a little more stingy might be good for them.
Well, that's sort of what I've looked at, I've sort of, you know, I know Randall, Randall's a good old boy and I've been with him, known him for years, but. Sometimes he gets carried away with the money. And sometimes I just think, God, you know, why are you doing this, so? But a lot of boards, they just rubber stamp everything, might be, might be a thorn in his side, but.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay, well, we appreciate it, appreciate you coming in.
Okay, well.
We'll, uh, we'll probably be in touch with you.
Okay. I'm sure you will, so anyway, go ahead and shut me down on my pays and all that kinda. I did submit one more, uh, expense check in today.
Hey Bryce, before you go, are you okay, uh? I know you're, I know you are, but I just want, for public record, you're okay with Joey as our next emergency manager?
Yeah, that's fine, yep. Yeah, he's just seeing, you know, he's got a lot of things going on on his plate and, uh. My biggest concern was he had too much, but, you know, if he can manage it and do it, that's fine, he's got the background. And stuff and he has a desire, so.
Yeah, he seems to like it, which is good.
Yeah. I guess, until he learns it.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
You're awesome, Bryce.
Okay.
Alrighty, uh. So are you guys okay if I make a motion of appointing our new emergency manager? Or you wanna talk about it?
Well, you went through the interviews, um and who was involved in the interview process?
Uh Jared Johnson, Bryce and myself. We did interview everybody that applied. Most, I would say everybody that did interview did a really good job. I've contacted all of them. Um, a lot more choices than I would have anticipated, but I think we just have good people in that. And you know, people who volunteer are already usually pretty good. And most of them are volunteer people.
Have the others been notified?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead and make your motion and John to appoint.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Joey Stocking as our emergency manager today, moving forward.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Any, both of you have had time to look at the minutes, I assume?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes for September third, uh twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. How about expenditures?
I haven't gone through them yet, so.
Okay. We got a few minutes. Do we wanna grab Camille to do circuit breakers?
There's some phone from Mitch that explains his recommendation on the variance board, in case you guys wanna do that.
You see this, these names? Well, the variance board.
Are those like two names he's giving for the replacement of one? And you have to decide between the two. Is that one thing or two?
So, I know you like this person. But I don't, at all. Well, I don't mind this person.
On some instances, I
Well, they're already on.
P and Z.
Yeah. Did you see this bill, the two names? We were saying the first one's already on P and Z, second one we
Yeah.
Joey's gonna come tomorrow to do anything if he needs to go. Yeah, I don't know. We have a few questions to I'll talk to you after.
Um, I guess I'd like some clarification from Mitch as to whether he's actually contacted and see if they'd serve and uh are we putting two on or one?
Just one. Pick one of those two, so he's I can text that, second one. He was just texting me just now about this, so I can ask him if he's talked to both of them.
I'm assuming he has, but
Uh, yeah, I've uh, he's, the second one has a standing he's talked to me a few times, standing like he would like to serve on whatever we have. I will vote no on the first one. That'll be the first time I vote no in five years, just saying no.
Yeah, he has talked to both of them, they're both willing.
Alright. Um, I would make a motion that we appoint um based on my knowledge of each one, um I feel like that uh I would make a motion that we appoint Dave Orem uh to the variance board.
Uh, a hearty second for me.
Okay, moving second on Dave Orem as a variance board member. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, by the same sign, motion carries.
And we'll keep this second one um in mind for another appointment on an op- another opening, so.
Okay. I'll run and grab Camille.
Yeah, or Kaya, either one.
Might be able to do both of them.
Yeah, we probably can.
Grant contract review approval and approval.
It's just the renewal of the corner restoration that has already been approved. You had signed off on it back in January. I just hadn't sent it to him yet, cause I spaced it.
Oh, okay.
And we just haven't received the funding from the state yet, cause um I guess the funds were on hold and now maybe they're not, I don't know.
Or they haven't released them yet.
They have not released them yet.
Not until our audit has been uh
Yeah, that's what we're releasing the audit.
Twenty twenty-three, and now we're going back into another one for twenty twenty-four, cause it's October first.
So, it's already been approved. It's just a continuation of the
So we don't need a motion or anything on that?
We have to apply every year. It's not just a continuation. We apply every year and it's awarded every year, but they've had enough funding that we've been able to be successful um in getting those applications in which we match. So I would make a motion that we approve the the chairman's signature on the and they've renamed it to the M R C C uh committee, which is the Monument uh Monument Replacement and Restoration Committee, so um
What the heck? That's a weird name.
So this contract period is from July first to uh June uh thirtieth of twenty-six. So we are in the process right now of paying what we got from our uh uh from our uh twenty-five grant, twenty-four, twenty-five grant. Um, so this is actually a new grant for twenty thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay, I second that.
Okay, moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so um, we should be going, good to go there and they should release our money from our twenty-three, twenty-four grant. Um, so we can pay Wasatch County, so hopefully they will. Actually, twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, hopefully that will, I think we went ahead. Did we not go ahead and and play Wasatch County on their invoice? Okay, we paid Wasatch County as a contractor to do the work for us, so we've paid them for this last, last go around.
Yeah, we just got it. The purples are, Kai signed up to approve it and we're, it's on the next check.
Okay, and so now we have twenty thousand four hundred plus match um for our next go around, in which we um need to decide what corners we wanna make sure that we include.
Is it a hundred percent match, twenty thousand four hundred?
Uh, fifty percent, so. One of the things we probably need to look at is is what's been established. Have you got the new corners in that they've done this last year, Kai? Um, you know where those were at?
They sent me a file and I think I've got it uploaded.
Okay.
They, they did a ton last year, so.
Yeah, it'd be good to look at those. Few maybe um for November, um maybe if you could print off a map and kinda give us an idea of where those are and then let's look and see where the gaps are, um so that we're I don't know how much longer this is gonna go on. We've been really fortunate, but
Yeah.
Um, you know, if, if, you know, we ought to get our priority places.
Yeah, I know around the lake is messed up on the west side still.
And that's what they were doing this year.
Okay.
They did quite a few there this year.
And those are getting important, cause some of those, some of those easements are blocked by private private driveways that say no entrance. They're kinda bugging me, cause I take my kids over there. But I kinda wanna know what the lines are before I pick a fight with people.
Yeah, so they've been doing a lot of work this year on the west side of the lake, especially up towards like the Idaho border.
Okay.
Um, and I, I told them to do up on the west side of the lake. They did some in the Randolph area um this year, or they were told to anyways.
Yeah, I was gonna say Randolph looks a lot cleaner on like all the apps.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's see what they've got done, um and then, you know, look at places maybe we wanna concentrate.
We usually have a meeting with Wasatch around December and they kinda show us what they've done and say, okay, where else? So that will be coming up here pretty quick.
Okay.
So, do you wanna, are you gonna be on the agenda in November or December? What do you want me to do for now?
Um, well, November may be a big I don't know, it depends on how quick we're gonna have our, well, no. No- November'd be better than December, cause December's when we're probably gonna have our budget airing and that will probably be a fairly full day, so.
Kai, can I go to, can I do that meeting with you?
Sure.
When the Wasatch comes, okay.
It's usually just over like Zoom.
Okay, yeah. I'd love to just see what's going on.
So, manager setting, so Kai is gonna be on the agenda to present the, what has happened?
Well, let's just see. Let's just see.
Yeah.
If you've got, if you've got a mannered in, um what they've got done so far and are prepared to do that, fine. If not, then, you know, let's in, before we, let's, I mean, they, you can have your meeting with them, but I think we oughta have some information. I mean, I, I'm not, I just would like to see where we've got done, where there's gaps and and see if there's places where it would be better to have them do them versus
Priorities.
If you're wanting to do it through a commission meeting, it may be better to wait until January. That way we can
And that's fine.
That way we can get everything caught up and then, cause they usually like give us, we, usually in that meeting, they say this is what we've done this year. And then they'll give me a couple weeks or whatever to decide where I want the next ones.
Okay.
So if you're wanting to do it in a commission meeting, then we should do it probably January.
It can be, it can be a work meeting. I mean, it doesn't really, I just, I just would like to see what we've got done and where the gaps are and make sure that um, you know, we're, we're probably looking at the priority areas, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you.
Yep.
No problem.
So what are these? Warrants, sheriff's warrants, building permit.
So we had to reimburse on a building permit. And this is their deposit.
Like when they close out the permit, the thing we just, I'm not sure.
The same with the church?
Yeah, building permit.
Return.
And I'm not sure why it comes back as sheriff's warrants, cause they're not sheriff's warrants.
No, that's kinda what I thought, but
It's the account that I think is the, their flow through, that's the name of it, that she uses for like things that like money coming in and out. I, I don't know, I, that's where she wanted it to go.
Tell her to knock it off, okay? It's bugging us that this is sheriff's.
There literally are sheriff warrants that occasionally pop up.
Yeah.
But it's not very often, so maybe we could have another one.
I think we're okay, it's on, it's all consistent. I can't believe we got fifty eight thousand dollars off of that sales tax in one month. Well, it's gonna, it's gonna match. It'll match close to these, cause these are point two five, point two five. So this will be bigger than these amounts
Mm-hmm.
by years end, so we'll have an extra four hundred thousand dollars terms towards payroll and
And wasn't that, wasn't that the money that was held out? Isn't that why it was the big chunk?
We, it looks like they did two months together, because the first month was only nine thousand, the next month was sixty thousand. Usually I've noticed that that's just two months that have been mashed up.
State your name and your office.
Little Shakeros Treasurer's Office.
Okay.
You want just the papers or you want me to tell you one by one?
Just tell us what you need us to, what, what you're presenting to us.
A low income abatement tax credit.
Okay.
People have applied to this circuit breaker program to, for tax relief, older people? Okay, there's, pass them around. Doesn't look like many applicants.
No, there's only one from last year and Eugene sent two, to Spence Wilson and his sister Carrie, but she never received any for, for him.
Yeah. You have to be sixty-six or older and be a widow, or widower with a not very much income.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Sounds like we'd have a lot more, but maybe people don't even know about this. Like that one
Usually there's a few more than that, it seems like.
That one lady that was talking.
So, um, is there, there's not a deadline on this, right?
Uh, I'm not sure. I thought that there was a deadline on it.
Uh, by September first, yeah. No, renters and mobile homeowners can apply by December thirty-first.
So I, I do know that if your name's in a trust, then you, you can't
No.
qualify and stuff for that, so that's why there's some that don't.
Hmm, interesting. Interesting. I think that's a pretty easy one to make a motion, to approve the circuit breaker applications. And I do make that motion?
Is that a motion, John?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, move in a second, approve the circuit breaker, breaker applications, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
You have to sign all of them?
Yep.
So Camille, have you been doing okay with more responsibility and I guess more time in that office?
I don't have any more responsibility.
But you work more. You feel like you're doing okay, or you feel overwhelmed, or?
Cause Eugene still does all the reports and everything like that, so.
You're just the, once she's gone, you're the face of. By the way, Bill, you were right, drink more water, my hands feel so much better.
Actually, you've been drinking a little more.
I had arthritis, but I was dehydrated.
Doctor Cox fixed your arthritis.
On Tyler's uh. Checklist that he does, do you guys, I mean, do you see any of that at all?
The inspections that you just?
Well, yeah, there's a whole thing of things that require.
You see the packet, like when people submit, you see all the documents, right?
I can, but we usually don't do anything, but they will just add to it if, if they're gonna turn something in.
Well, we just need to add one more thing that people, and that would be an encroachment permit. Um, or a utility cut that, um. Just to make sure that he notifies, that the people who are doing that. Contact our road department so that they can issue a permit to where it intersects the county road.
Okay, if you wanna call them.
Um, yeah, just, just tell them that, you know, on anything that's. We, we just need to be in the loop when people are gonna impact the county road, whether it's for a driveway or whether it's a u- utility. Cut or bore or whatever.
So he needs to add to his documentation, you need an encroachment permit if you're interacting with county roads.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Okay, would you please?
Yeah, everything costs us, thank you. Now do we have a motion on the expenditures?
Uh, make a motion to approve the expenditures for the last month, September?
Second.
Move the second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, time for call this meeting a break for lunch, resuming at one o'clock.
Okay, I'm on.
Okay, I'll call Rich County Commission meeting back to order. And turn the time over to our assessor.
Okay, Kim Wilson, Rich County Assessor. Did you guys bring yours?
I memorized it.
Oh, I'm just checking, I was just teasing. Here are my spreadsheets that we were talking about. Kind of with what we had gone over, we can go through them here. One at a time if you want me to, if you want to buzz through them. If you want to just look at them and see the only ones that we, or the only ones we talked about. Or the second one and the last one about making any changes on. And so, I did, you can see what the adjustments are there.
Second and last one on the first page.
On the first page, it says, BOE hearings in person. Should be the top page. Do you want to go through each one? Do you kind of, you already know what, know what we discussed last week.
Can I have any folder that you needed? We don't have all.
Any heartburn on those?
We ought to look, we ought to look at them. We've got these in order.
You did look at them.
Yeah, I took some notes on some.
And then that's kind of what I got out of it as to what changes needed to be made.
So would I have GNV cabin on here or not?
Yes. Oh no, it's, it's this, it's right there, you just pass it, he's right, right there.
Car- uh, the second one, Caroline, she was the older lady, right?
Yeah, the other Zoom call with, with Mark. And that, I guess, see if that accurately reflects what we discussed.
I think so, that's what they're probably gonna list it at, maybe sell for a little bit less. The two hundred thousand. And we looked at the properties around it and that seems right.
For my sake, you'll have to specify when you guys make a decision on each one?
I think usually you do the whole thing at the end if we're, unless, don't.
I think what we'll do is we'll mark this up and approve it and then give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Or not mark it up and just take it how it is.
Does this, am I not reading where did, it says changed, did you lower it?
Yes, if you look at the, um, pre-board, so the land didn't change on that one. You see where the land didn't change, but the, the house did.
Oh, okay.
And then the total, you can see what the total was there. That was based on what he told us on the percentage. So the first three are the pre-board, the next three are the post, after board of deceleration. Or what we were, we said what we discussed. And then the second page would be the waived in-person. So that was the information that we went through. And again, I think that reflects what we had discussed here. And what your recommendations to me were. And if you have any, you know, if you need me to look at anything in addition or if you guys remember something differently, just let me know.
Do you guys need highlighters or anything?
Uh, I don't.
The third page was mistakes and corrections and the residential status, whether primary or secondary. And we discussed all of those. And those ones, they have stipulations that the appellate signed as well as I signed. And I think I've collected all the data, but if there's any that you want to see specifics on, I can go get them, so I just didn't bring them all down. I think most of it you already looked at and we kinda discussed last week.
So on the stipulations, um.
Now that last page is, so the stipulations, um, that we did for the mistakes and corrections.
Yeah.
This is kinda what it, they look like, this was a little bit new, different than what we had done in the past.
And they, and they signed that, give it back to you and then you say like.
So I signed it first and sent it to them and then they signed it. And then what we have to do is have, uh, the board, the hearing officer, or the, yeah, hearing officer or the, the. Sign it on the top line, 'cause they've kinda signed, some of them signed above where it said appellate and some signed below where it said appellate. So. And those, those were the mistakes and corrections one, and then the very last page is ones we stipulated to. Um, looking at, uh, someone we just had an extra land value on. Uh, the one had a couple, it had the two travel trailers that were registered as motor vehicles that needed to be take, taken off. Um, s- they had either, you know, recent sale or closing. Uh, just recent, recent sale of the property. And then some of them when we went, that's where I looked at some of those that had the comparable sales. And looking at their information as well as the current market data, I agreed with what their information was. When I started pulling the sales data and went specifically to their pers- you know, their property. We were high on several of them, so. And there was a couple of them in there that were from state appeals. That were from, um, two thousand and four state appeals and the appeals weren't finalized before, uh. I had to have my values closed or had them on the assessment roll. And so, they were just kind of a carryover from them I agreed with. We stipulated on some of them and some of them were an actual decision from the, from the board. From, or from the state appeals.
So Kim, when you do a stipulation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you send them a paper, they sign, and they send it back?
Yes.
Okay.
So I've signed it and they have signed it and, um, basically it's waiting for yours to make it. Now, just because I signed it and they signed it doesn't mean you guys have to sign it if you don't agree.
Okay, I was just trying to understand the process.
Yes.
It's like ever saying, oh yeah, I recognize this.
It's like a s- it's a settlement on the fair value, okay.
And it also takes away their right to appeal once it's done. At least for this character, so like they can't go on to the state and fight it.
That makes sense.
So, as soon as my hand is dry then I'll give you a little, I'll show you what I'm talking about. And we haven't done that in the past. That was kind of a newer thing and a good suggestion from Annalise so that we do that. And I think it was good for the people, this is what we send, that's co- that's a stipulation. We kinda, it's kinda similar to what the, well, it's a state form, we just put our information in it. And, um. But they agree with what, I agree and then, and they agree.
This is a state form, like the state provides that form?
It's one that's put out by the state, it's a, the form, the PT.
Okay. I like that, 'cause it's like easy to see the difference of the, of the values, it's like, yeah, I'll hurry and sign it.
Yes. Yeah.
So they change their mind.
Well, and like I said, they have a chance, I send it to them and they have a chance to disagree. Um, you know, they don't have to sign that and then it just comes back to, you know, comes to you guys. Normal, but some of them I could, you know, if I started pulling the sales data that was specific to their property and looked specifically without doing the mass appraisal, where I have to do lots of properties. Um, sometimes it just works out to where you, you know, you're right, I agree. That the, we're, we are high or we're low, either one, you know, whichever, usually, you know. There's a few that sometimes will let me know that we're too low.
And that was the Kearl property this time, right? That's the one that he raised?
Yes, well, that one and then we had to change the Saban property. I had a house on the wrong piece. That was in the mistakes and corrections. And so the, the, the people that I moved the house off of their property. They signed it as well as the person that I put it onto their property, they signed it, the whole, the property owners. And if you wanna see any of the information that's kinda noted there.
Oh, you, you moved the house off of Saban's and onto, uh, Anderson's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Remind me, were Blaine and Mindy Moon the ones near the border on the west side? Blaine, Blaine has to be there.
They were in Lockwood. He was actually down in Lockwood.
Okay. My camera there. That's our folder.
I see this refresh. Six eighty-five Lockwood Drive. So I wrote this on there on his and I don't know why. Which person is that?
Well, because you, I don't, I don't know why.
Who's that? Oh, which one? Oh. That was my note, I, I don't know what he said that made me think that, but you're good. We didn't, we didn't lower him, did we?
No.
No, I remember, I remember his, at first I think I felt the same way, that's probably why he wrote that on the first page. And then by the end, the, he had more, more acreage and his c- cabin had been added on to and was nicer. And he's comparing to the neighbor up the road.
Probably so.
He stayed the same?
Yes, um, but we corrected the acreage.
Oh, that's right.
This is my list taken from that spreadsheet that I pulled up on everybody that killed online. So just comparing which one happened. Did this one, was that like a mistake or did he have to perp? You have any to hand?
I don't know, I can't even look.
Could you, I don't remember.
That's a, I don't think that I can.
On that. On that one. For some reason I wrote this down. Did we have a discussion about that? Have to ask her. What's the parcel number? That's, um. G and V cabin. Top, very top one. Complete bid on the state of pill if you, once or twice. And I wrote this on my knees too. Maybe lower, but then I said we're pretty good. Miami. Nineteen seventy-six trailer. And we did no change. Yeah, I don't know. On that, uh, one years brought in, John, what, uh. You wrote down a number on, what was your number?
One seven three five. From one nine oh five. And I think I did it because I compared square footage and front footage and found the next closest person.
Yeah, those, those ones on the lake front are so hard.
Okay, so yes, they did, or they did own the same, so I did a new spreadsheet with them on it. So the waived in person. The waived in person sheet. Take me the first one back.
We have something different.
That we had to add another parcel here for this too. They had two parcels. They had nine and ten. It's the same, everything was the same.
Remind me, what, what is it per front footage again?
Ten thousand.
So if they have twenty extra feet, that's two hundred thousand.
If they have, uh, yeah.
Holy cow.
If they have, cause if they had another hundred front feet, it'd be, they're at two million. Did you find your way to the picture?
I think that's why I did that. These guys have they have twenty extra feet in them, so an extra two hundred thousand, but they have four hundred square feet less, but they're at one. So you want the extra two hundred thousand, they're at one seven.
Thank you, cause I didn't see that.
So you might be able to make up that difference, but they have less front footage, but they have more square footage, so it would be closer. Does that make sense? I think that's why I was doing that. They're, they're lots a little bigger.
So did you give me yours?
Yep, I did.
You didn't got any one, okay. And you give me, you only got any one?
I haven't done it, I haven't done it yet. Let's see, waived in person. Oh. Waived in person?
Yes.
I can't think of anything on this. Do you guys have it?
Um, oh, you got any one, okay.
Yeah, no, I got it, I got it. What, what do you think about that, Bill?
What's that?
What do you think about that one? So the only thing is, I was pointing out is a, uh, two hundred less thousand front footage. They have a little bit more square footage. So taking off two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I have I wonder, one minute, seventy fifty is what I had.
Okay. There are lots a little bigger. They have a little more square footage, they have less front footage. And it's a little newer. I mean, I still don't think they'll like it, but. Who was that? Top one. I mean, I, I still don't think, I still think there'll be a bit. So.
If you look at.
This is the paper you originally gave us.
Right, so this was, um.
Here's them.
Right.
I do know that they remodeled. They had some that was only usable in the wintertime, but I, I just was noticing trying to compare apples. These guys are pretty close. They have a couple, they have two hundred thousand more front footage.
Mm-hmm, but they only have two thousand square feet.
Yeah, so you have, you make up the difference of their front footage with their extra square footage and their lot size.
Hmm, that.
In my brain, that's all I'm thinking of.
Okay. That's whatever you guys wanna do on that, but.
So.
I would be cautious.
Did the state stipulate? What value did this state?
At the initial hearing, we prevailed.
And they're still going?
Uh, formal hearing for the twenty-eighth of September, or of October, I mean.
But they're going for one point four?
I, that whatever was on that appraisal that they submitted, which, um, but that appraisal was an older appraisal and that's the one that they had shared lakefront on. Which I don't, I, I don't agree with their appraiser saying that it was, that, those were the most comparable.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, cause you can make it adjust, adjustments for the homes, but it's like that shared lakefront really skews the picture.
Cause it's not shared or it is shared?
Cause the one, two of their comparables they compared to, or their appraiser compared to was.
Shared, shared to non-shared.
And theirs was not, theirs is not.
Cause it's Idaho.
Right, and they, those were the two that were in Idaho. And like I said, when you start comparing, it's like, uh, you know, and, and their appraiser definitely gonna defend their, his appraisal for sure.
Yeah. I mean, I'm still leaning towards going down a little bit, but let me just do something real quick. Not that I don't want you to be mad at me, but.
Well, it's neither here nor there for me. This is what you guys wanna do, but.
Well, I'm scared of you.
Well, it's just not my decision, this is yours. I've already done my, I've already done my homework when I, when I set the the stuff and again, when I reviewed them before we came to BOE.
Yeah, okay. This is making a little more sense.
No, I just, because Carolyn was on there twice, but she did the same parcel. Well, yes, she only had the one that I wrote, so I just would make sure we didn't miss any. I'm working on some of that to change, so I get, I like it.
Did you guys feel okay about? I mean, we don't have to change anything, except to you guys.
Statistically, I think, I just think together with each other, the little stipulations.
Okay, yeah.
I don't have, and I can't compare it to previous years, cause I have no pre-dention.
Well, we could probably go back and calculate that if we need it.
I don't, I don't need that, I just, it'd be interesting.
So what happens if we lower a value as far as like precedent in the future? Does that affect anything?
Yes, it could. It could, it could, it could affect precedent. Um, also, depending on what, you know, what you're weighing it against, um, for me, it's the fair and equity, equitability.
Yeah.
You know, it's gotta be fair and equal is what my job is. You guys have the latitude to kinda not worry about that, the equitability as much. But then, when I go for, for next year to try to make, to try to value it, then it can get kinda sticky. And there again, like you said, there is a precedence for, you know, when it goes to state appeal for sure, if it goes all the way to a formal hearing, even an informal hearing. You know, some of that is precedent setting, it could be, depending on what the case is.
Yeah.
You know, and what's, what's heard.
So I'd say this big huge one is probably, wouldn't this be undervalued then if it, they have a hundred and fifty front footage?
Um, let's see.
This is the shallow one.
Oh, the, the narrow depth one.
But I mean, that would put their house.
And see, we, I, we're thinking that that may be, the square footage of that one may have been incorrect. And I haven't had a chance to get over there and actually look at that house yet.
Okay.
But I know there was a basement, a main floor, a second floor, but then there was also garage. There was a garage in the basement and a garage on the main floor. There's like two garages on the end of that house, which that's, that's Canada's garage square footage without calculating it in as like the total square footage. Cause it's not livable square footage. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, it's livable for the car, but not for the.
So if they have one and a half million dollars of front footage, then that leaves six hundred grand for their big old house.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe next year.
And like I said, I've gotta look at that because I still may have a problem with the square footage and it may just be a typing error. I just haven't had a minute to look at it, so, and I apologize, cause I was going to.
No, you're good.
We just had, I've been working trying to get the Puma.
So my opinion is we lower that one down this year to, I, I don't know if you guys feel the same. I know that's, first, it's in my notes a bunch of times. I can't remember my thoughts on it, but I think I would be kind of hacked off if my neighbor to the north was close to the same valuation as well. But I'm, it's not a hill I'm willing to die on, so. Besides that, I think the rest of them are perfect and I think you've done a really good job. And I'm grateful to you for your efforts.
So this is the one, this is the house you were talking about, right?
Yes, that, see on that.
But it's narrow.
It is very narrow and it had to be because of the size of the lot.
Yeah.
And then it's got, like I said, this end down in here, there's two garages in there, down on the basement and then the upper.
But it's definitely worth more than six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, probably.
So, so I guess.
But now, now also, wait a minute, because if you're looking at the, the value of the land, on that one, it's got an adjustment for the depth.
Okay, so the one fifty frontage isn't as valuable.
So. But. But it's fifty-five feet wide, so I've had to adjust the value down because it limits what they could do with that. Cause like in order to build that house, they had to really make some adjustments on that house to make it a skinny, longer, taller house.
On the, on the ten thousand dollar front foot, that's a hundred foot deep lot, right?
That's, that's a one seventy-five to two twenty-five is a base lot. So if it's fifty-five, it's substantially lower than that.
It's like half or what?
Yes, we, that's where that depth adjustment that we talked about, the depth adjustment came into play because it's not valued because it limits the utility, their, their use, what they can use it for, um, if it's that narrow. Does that make sense? So we, that's why we do the adjustment for anything that's under that base lot size and anything that's way over that base lot size. We also do an adjustment up on that because they have additional land that people will pay extra money for, but not like a full, uh.
I think that this house is only thirty feet wide.
Yeah, yeah, it's narrow.
Yeah.
Twenty-five or thirty, I can't, I'd have to go grab.
Thirty feet wide?
I think, yeah, it's only thirty feet wide.
And they had to do specific plans. I know they had to do some real, um, uh, creati, they had to be creative on what they did with that house, just because of the size of the lot. So that, that land front, so that, that's not a straight.
It's not one point five million, it'd be discounted, maybe even, even half-ish.
So yes, so that house is more valuable. Sorry, I didn't, I wasn't even thinking about that, but it is because of that depth adjustment.
Well, that's why it seems so weird, cause that's not something that you would, you would get wrong. You, you know, that's why I'm like.
Right. I mean, I try not to, something that big and I know I've measured that thing a couple of different times because it's, it's.
Well, it's an outlier. I mean.
It is, it's one of those that are kinda, we don't have anything like it.
And it's hard to have a comparable for it because it's, the lots is much narrower and smaller, you know, and, and, you know, it, it limits what they can like you say, it limits what they can actually build there.
Yeah, well, and the other thing we have to look at is we have similar, like we'll have other depths, but some of them that haven't been built on. Or like this house is never sold. That house is never sold, so we don't know what, what people would be willing to pay for it until, you know, we can give it our best shot with the other sales that are going on. It's just hard to know on the, on that particular one, because it hasn't sold and like Bill said, it's a, it's an outlier. We don't have any others like that. You know, we have other homes that are similar and you can find homes around that lake that are similar. But then when you start looking specifically at like that one, that's a, a, one of those one of a kind ones. You know, and we do have several of those around in the Garden City area, the one of a kind that are.
Well, yeah, I mean, when, when they follow the Neander line, you know, just some of the lots are just not, they're not all the same.
No, and then they, then you have other factors that like wetlands or topography. Um, those kinda things can also affect that land value around there.
So what would the land value be like? How would you classify the, like a quarter acre or a half an acre?
I can't.
Yeah, because that's like, let's say their lots point three acres and the ones point six acres.
That you'd have to go by front footage.
Front footage is the only way to do it.
You could kinda go by if they have additional land, you know, back behind or additionally, in addition to the base lot size. Um, or less than that, but it's hard to compare.
So front footage is more important than the size of the acreage?
Yes, the front footage is along that lake and that's what makes it the most valuable.
Yeah.
I mean, you can have five acres, but if you only have a hundred front feet, then people aren't gonna pay as much for that for the rest of that acreage that's back off the lake as they would that stuff that's right on that lake.
So I think that, I think that still just reinforces that I think that they need to go down a little bit. You know, cause they have a neighbor up north, a hundred twenty front feet, that's one point seven, it's a little bit smaller house, they have a neighbor down south that's seventy-five feet, little bit smaller house, but they're one point three. I think we need to throw them a bone and then, I mean, probably still gonna get fought, but that would make me feel better. And that's the only one that I had a strong notes on. Everyone, all the other ones that I had notes on, we, we changed them. And I think Sam, you had a note that said a little bit less too.
Well, and I didn't have, we hadn't discussed anything on that one as to doing any lowering, so that's why I didn't have it reflected in the spreadsheets, cause nobody said anything about that, cause I, and I asked before we left about the two that we did change.
So I would wanna move that one to one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction as well. Yeah, hundred fifty thousand dollar reduction is all. The rest I would wanna keep the same. Would you guys have a problem with that?
So you wanna drop it a hundred and?
I wrote one, one million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand for some reason. But I, they wanted one million, four hundred thousand. That's way too low. But compared to their neighbors, I did one point. Seven, five.
And I got them all.
No, they, no, it's the same number.
Oh. There was one that had two though. Well, that was Mitchell Stevens. Mitchell Stevens had two, had two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that paid, had two, um.
It should have been one and two, not one and four. That was, this is what they submitted, so it could have been a typo on there, right?
Oh.
Check that.
Cause like I said, cause that one should be one and, but, cause that, that was a step. Yeah, cause it was lot, it was lot one and two instead of one and four.
So we, we prevailed on last year's, right?
We're twenty-three. We haven't heard twenty-four's at the state appeal yet.
Okay, same creeps of property though, right?
Yes, that was in the initial hearing. And like I said, they scheduled the formal hearing on it for the twenty-eighth, which.
For twenty-four.
For twenty-three.
And what was the value that they were fighting against? Do you remember? The one, twenty twenty-three? But I, I just don't feel like we should take you know, attitudes or challenges into it. I just think this would be fair.
Well, no, I mean, there's no, I mean, it's, it needs to be consistent of, you know, where we're at with, with what they have, you know, square footage versus front footage.
I wish the, did you understand what I was saying as far as like the other numbers? Sorry to cut you off. Like these are the neighbors.
Yeah, no, I, no, I've, I've got that sheet.
What were you gonna say, Sam?
Just to say, I wish we had the, the end result of the twenty-three.
Yeah. Yeah.
Appeal.
I just wanna know if the number they're fighting is more or less than this. I I thought we saw that number, I thought she was.
Um. The, this was twenty three, this is twenty three, and the initial was one, seven, sixty nine, one oh two, one point seven, six, nine, one oh two.
Now is initial and we prevailed on that.
Yes, and this was twenty three, like I said, we have not heard twenty fours yet.
And twenty fours was is gonna was the same number?
Uh, I think it was a little, it might have been the same number, and then twenty five was different.
And we saw an increase in front foot in between twenty four and twenty five, if I'm right.
Uh, from ninety six to ten, so four hundred.
Four hundred dollars.
Yep. And you saw where the.
That's about what we did two years ago.
And you can see what. And you can see on that other page that we had, that had all of the different sales that we analyzed for two thousand and twenty five.
Oh, yeah.
That had, I mean, we could reasonably be up to fourteen or fifteen thousand a front foot. Because I'm at ten and the lowest one was eleven thousand a front foot, this off sales data vacant land sales.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that makes a difference, because you know, if we had ten sales, the state could make us factor that up.
That that's a hard thing to do, that's a hard job.
It is hard. Well, it's very difficult, cause you know it's gonna affect people drastically.
Yeah.
And I mean, if you go to what the properties are selling for, you know, if you got, well, there was one at eleven, one at thirteen, I think, fourteen and fifteen. On those sales up per front foot, like thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand a front foot. The lowest one sale indicated eleven thousand a front foot and we're at ten. But even from four hundred dollars a front foot, if you have a hundred front feet, that went up four hundred thousand dollars. That's a huge jump for people, let alone if you take it up from, you know, ninety six to say twelve thousand even. I mean, that's a huge jumping value.
Yeah.
Even though that's what, maybe that's what people are paying for that. That's huge, that's that's hard on people, you know, and I I know they think I'm an ogre and just do it to be me, but you know, the law says I'm supposed to be at. Up, you know, ten thou- or at within ten percent of what higher low, what properties are selling for. And we, but luckily, we don't have a ton of sales around the lake, or, you know, if we had ten sales. And even with four vacant land sales, they could still, you know, the state can start to look at areas of concern. Which they will if it keeps trending over time, I'm really hoping things start to trend down a little bit. I mean, we don't wanna drastic drop, you know, that sends the tax rate sky high, but. If we could have things start to trend down a little, I think that would be helpful. But yeah, three years ago, we're about what you're suggesting. And things, you know, sales just around that lake, they're just not going down, people, if they have, if it's lakefront property and it comes open, somebody's buying it. Unless there's some kinda major issue with something.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Um, I don't know, I guess I'm fine keeping it how it is then. Cause it certainly has appreciated and if the state. You know, can't really base decision based on what hasn't happened, but.
Well, like I said, that's just what was came out of the initial hearing order, they have appealed to a formal hearing on October twenty eighth.
Is that something you have to attend, you attend that?
I I do, but I usually attend it virtually.
Okay.
Um, anymore, after the nine eleven, they kinda wanted it, or not eleven, nine eleven, sorry.
Never forget.
Covid, after Covid, sorry, Covid, whichever that disaster's happening since I've been in the S E O center. But since the Covid, they kinda were doing a lot of in-person meetings, but then once that hit, then it was went kinda to virtual. Now everything's set up, so people can go to Salt Lake if they want to. For me, it's like, usually these are right in the middle of the day and it takes me an entire, it would take me an entire day to go to Salt Lake and then back. And have the hearing where I can attend the hearing virtually here, um, now obviously I have to send my information down to them ten business days in advance. Uh, whatever I'm gonna uh, um, talk about or or bring up in my appeal. It has to be sent down ten business days in a he- ahead and they're they have to exchange data with me. So then if it is, if we're all on there virtually, then we all have the data we can look at, everybody's what they're presenting to the board basically.
Okay.
But that's how I attend them, just because it's just, you know, two hours, one way travel time is, you know. I don't get much done here if I do that. And I felt that the tr- the tax commission has treated us all, you know, very fair and similar, whether we're here or, you know, whether I'm here.
It's there's no benefit to go down there, yeah.
Yeah, as long as the information is presented and and there, then we're good. And when we did, when I did the, I did an appraisal for this property for twenty three. And, um, it supported the all the data that I found using the Utah, um, comparables. Supported the value that we had on. I think that's one of the reasons we prevailed at the initial hearing.
Well, I feel pretty good that that at least it consider, it deserves some consideration.
Yes.
So I feel like we've done that enough that I'm fine keeping it how it is. Unless you guys have any thoughts about it?
I think it probably needs to stay where it is just for the fact that, um.
Okay.
You know, we're we're looking at. At lowering it to to twenty three values, which that we already know that the front footage is is increased by then and so. Um, not that we can control it, so I think we probably ought to stay where it is, they're not gonna be happy, but. Um, until the tax commission, you know, stipulates what it's gonna be, I think we do the very best job in trying to, um, let the sales.
Yeah.
Show us what what people are paying for.
I think the discussion was enough that I feel comfortable keeping it like you said, going.
Well, you had me one over until we found out that we taxed.
The rate?
The rate, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess if it comes back, if that was too high, then, you know, we'll deal with it then.
Yeah.
Okay, based on that, I would make a motion that we, uh. Go with the recommendations of the assessor and also based on her, uh. Our BOE hearings that we've had and review material that we approved, the adjustments that's been presented to us.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same sign, motion carries unanimous.
Okay, then, Chairman, I have all the stipulations that need to be signed.
And where do we do that?
Top line, so if you'll just sign the top line right there.
Well, and Alicia and Kim, thank you for working on this.
Yes.
You're welcome.
It's like the worst thing ever.
It's not so, I mean, it's it's hard.
I would hate your job.
But it's, you know, if you got the data there, you know, and you guys are good to look at at the information and that's what's, you know, both. That I've presented and both that the people have presented.
Yeah.
And that's what's been nice is that you guys have looked at all the data, whether they're hearing person or whether they're, you know, waived their in-person hearing. You know, I think it's been, you guys have done a nice job of that.
It has been cool to see the the taxes drop over time with the growth.
Yeah.
You know, six years ago, it was a ten or eleven thousand dollars out out at the ranch and it's nearly half that, you know, for that one portion.
That's that's in the tax rate, you know, tax, as values go up, tax rates go down.
Yeah.
So that's the problem with it dropping drastically, then the tax rate would go up if values drop.
If mar- if the market values dropped on everything, yeah, well, right now, we're enjoying, you know, the growth and the extra values.
Yeah.
Did you get an actual appeal? Um, um. Playing on.
Yes.
So I don't think I have, like, I don't have it as one of my appeals.
You should. I don't think so, I thought it came, cause you had, they had a file on it.
We we approved the change on his, he's in the.
No, I know, I know that.
Yeah, but yeah, he did, he sent one, cause he sent some.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, we had a package.
Yeah, I was gonna say that he was in their their files. I was gonna say, everything that I got, the only things I got that that.
Yeah, no, I I cross-checked it, everything looks good.
Okay, the only thing that I may have gotten that you didn't was a mis- one of the mistakes, um, like if it was a mistake or correction or primary residence. Cause that's the one you referred to me, I think.
What is that?
Initially.
What was that thing that just drove past?
Part of a rig.
He's a rig.
They say, I saw part of a train go by earlier, you know, the the base part with the great big old long trailer, so it's probably the one to set it up somewhere. What do you think of the government shutdown? I think we need to reelect all the members of Congress.
Yeah.
I need to, we, I think there there, isn't that dereliction of duty if you're not doing your job and you're make and the government shuts down because you're not doing your job? Can't we get rid of all of them for that and then start over with fresh ones? Cause it's, that's a mess.
Drain this, you're saying drain the swamp?
Yeah. It's like, you know, if they can't come to work together and come to, and the government has to shut down. Then all those poor employees, cause they were mentioning that the paychecks for all those con- congressmen are still gonna come through. But now all the employees, the seven hundred fifty thousand people.
That are furloughed.
Are furloughed, they don't get a paycheck.
Yeah, and they're supposed to keep working, some of them.
Some of them are supposed to work for free. The necess- the the, what are the necessary ones or?
Yeah, essentials.
Essentials, thank you, that's.
That's another Covid word.
Yeah, the essentials.
I kinda wish some of Congress was like, almost like a lot, like draft based, like they just, like if you're qualified, like it's your turn with being Congress, you can just be like polled from the public, you know? No elections, it's just like your turn for a couple of years, you know?
It just, uh, that's just kinda disheartening that they can't work together. Seems like when they got this bad, the last time it was, or one of the, one of the few times they've gotten to this point, nine eleven happened. And then all of a sudden, it was, now we were all united against a different enemy and. But it took something like that before they started to work together.
My only recommendation on this is your ones where you make, you you find your corrections and your mistakes and you make those changes. Wish we had some kind of a form like a stipulation.
Oh, I did, I did, I did stipulation.
Did you did stipulations for all of these, nineteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am, cause when we talked about it, you suggested that, so.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna make that same one.
Yep, so he has two piles to sign, one that I stipulated with, uh, after looking over the information that we stipulated ahead of time. And the other one is the mistakes and correction stipulations.
You gotta streamline that signature, Sam.
Yeah, we need you to sign this.
I'm just, we adjourn.
Can we?
Yeah, we 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 made the motion to be passed, it's just a, it's just a formality now, he's gonna be here till five o'clock.
Okay, I second that, actually.
Me and Sam, we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no one?